We're good.
Good to go.
Good to go.
Yes, sir.
Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. My pleasure to convene the August eighteenth, twenty twenty five regular meeting of the Hartford Central School District Board of Education. We will begin this evening with a pledge of allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic which stands one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Begin our evening with a presentation about the Washington County Department of Health, represented by our own board member, Elisa Arlen.
Good evening, I'm Elisa Arlen. I am the, in addition to serving on the school board, the Director of Patient Services at Washington County Public Health. Currently, through the end of August, we are conducting our community health assessment survey, which is part of our community health assessment that we do every five years now. And we take input from residents of Washington County into account for programming for the next five years. So this round of programming will also align with the Health and People 2030 Guidelines and an agenda set through by the State Department of Health for the state health improvement plan. So I will share with Mr. Cook the link to the survey. We do have it on our social media and our website. And we will be up there this week with paper copies available. We have paper copies available in our office as well for residents to fill out, return to us, it doesn't have anyone's name on it, but what town do you live in? And goes through some demographic information and collects information on things affecting children in your communities and how do you rate the health of the people in your households, the people in your community overall. The last round that we did this, our two priority areas that came out were chronic disease, including tobacco use in our county, as well as mental health and substance use disorder. So, and those were fairly consistent with other counties in our region and with the previous assessment that was done three years before that, so. No predictions, but.
So is that something, if you share that, would you like us to kind of share that on our social media platform?
Yeah, or you can go to the, probably the easiest way to share it is to go to the public health page and share the.
Okay. We can do that.
Thank you, and I made a note, Elisa, to remember that your name is announced Elisa, not Alyssa, after all these years of seeing you in church.
Yes, sorry.
Elisa.
Just don't call me Arlene.
Thank you, Elisa. I will read a brief statement of welcome, which helps the board delineate matters which come before us for public discussion and matters which could be reserved for discussion in executive session. The members of the Hartford Board of Education invite the public, residents of our school community, to share matters of interest or concerns with the board. The board president will recognize those who wish to speak, and individuals may be limited to three minutes if necessary. This portion of the agenda is meant as a one-way comment period and provides an opportunity to be heard prior to the board discussing and making any policy decisions. Please note, there are a number of items which are reserved for discussion in the executive session, and these items are listed on the agenda for reference. If you would like to discuss a topic which is restricted, please ask the board president for an audience with the members of the Board of Education during an executive session. Are there any items of that nature this evening? Okay, if something comes up during the meeting, just catch my eye so I don't get too distracted. We'll move then to our consent agenda. We have the minutes from the twenty twenty five, twenty twenty six reorganization meeting, which is held on July eighth, twenty twenty five, and the regular Board of Education meeting, which was held on that same date, July eighth, twenty twenty five. We have the arturiously prepared district's financial reports and CSE, CPSC recommendations. So the recommended action this evening is that, pending any questions, members of the Board of Education approve those consent items as presented.
Subterms.
Moved by Mrs. Thomas. Mrs. Happy, any discussion? All right, all in favor?
Aye.
Oppose? Carry? We'll move then to our hard-working, hard-working, recently vacationed superintendent, Mr. Cook.
Thank you, Mr. Justin. Well, it's hard to believe we are only a couple of weeks away from the start of the new academic year, and our JV and varsity interscholastic athletics fall programs began today. So it's nice to have students back in the building after, it seemed like a very, very quick summer. It seemed like a very quick summer, but it is nice to have the students back in the building. Just as a reminder, we are scheduled for two superintendents' conference days, one on Tuesday, September second, and Wednesday, September third, with the students' first day of class on Thursday, September fourth. And I would just like to invite the members of the Board of Education to join with the faculty and staff on the second. As we officially begin the new year, refreshments will begin at eight AM with remarks by Mr. Justin and myself to about eight thirty in the auditorium. The first time we will listen auditorium.
I don't know whether this is a disincentive or an incentive to attend here my brief remarks. My title is sufficiently required.
Wow.
Our district newsletter has been mailed to all our district residents. Each time we publish a newsletter, it's a great deal of work, and I always say that I'm really proud of the product that we produce, but the summer newsletter is an animal all unto itself. It's sixteen pages long and contains a lot of legally required information, but a lot of information to help students and families start the year on a positive note. So I'm very proud of this document, I'd just like to thank Mrs. Tenner, our communication specialist, and Mrs. Howard for all their help on this publication. If you know of anybody that has not received the document, please let us know. We'll make sure we get, we get the mailing list from the Office of Real Property, but sometimes they're a year behind in updates, so every now and then someone might not get it that wants it or gets lost in the mail, just let us know. We can make sure that they receive one. Once again, on Friday, I will be participating in the milking contest at the Washington County Fair. So if anybody wants a lap, make sure you are at the milking barn at six PM on Friday. I'm hopeful not to come in last this year. We are working with Parents Square to transition to our new website, and we're nearing the anticipated conversion date of August twenty fifth, which would be next Monday, we're hoping to convert. This has been a very labor-intensive project to translate all of our existing information over and add new content and make sure that it's functioning properly as we go live. Again, I am really proud of the hard work that has gone into preparing the new site for the public. It will have the same domain address, so people don't have to learn a new website. It's just going to the same page, but it's going to direct you to a new location. With that, Mrs. Howard and I have been meeting with board docs on converting to a new Board of Education meeting platform for our agendas and minutes. The conversion to the new website won't allow our current operating system to work, so we did sign on with Erie One for a cross-contract with that. Hopefully, we'll be able to move forward to that next month, and we'll provide training for all the board members on how to do that as well. And then lastly, right before, right before I went on vacation at the end of July, I did attend the first War in Washington Saratoga Workforce Development Board meeting as a new board of director. It was a really interesting experience. Proud to be able to participate on that and represent the district in Washington County in that very important work. And then just a couple of important upcoming dates. Summer Regents Testing is tomorrow and Wednesday at Granville. We have a number of students doing that. Don't forget Friday, the milking contest. Next Monday, we launch our new website, the second and third are our superintendents' conference days, and the first day of class, September fourth. It's coming up quick.
Very good, thank you.
Thank you.
May I say, what Mrs. Happy said the first time, that the newsletter was in Shevsky.
Thank you.
So much information, it was so well done, and it was so kind, thank you.
Yeah, we, I mean, we really do get a lot of compliments on the newsletter. A lot of hard work goes into it, Mrs. Tenner does an excellent job, really taking a lead on that.
Any other questions, Mr. Cook? Thank you. Move then to our building principal's office. Mr. Dules unable to be here with us this evening, so we should plead with you in favor of us with your elementary school CSE report.
Shortest one. Just a couple of things, we'll have, most of our elementary teachers will be back in the building on Thursday as they will be participating in implementation training of our new ELA program. So our teachers are really excited about this. All of our materials have arrived, they've started unpacking things already. Before school ended, we did do a couple of trainings together, and now they are ready to fully implement this and super excited to do this. The program that we picked aligns with the science of reading and back to the phonics instruction. So again, what was good teaching and learning twenty, thirty years ago is now turning, come back around. Once again, this cycle seems to come back around to us, so we're excited to implement that. Also, we will have a school supply pickup in the elementary hallway. Families can come in August twenty sixth through September second, which we eat in one, pick up any supplies they need. All of these supplies have been given to us through generous donations, through community members, parents, retired teachers, and other local organizations throughout the community and the region. So those, we really appreciate all of those donations and the amount of stuff we get every year, it's just amazing. Helps all of our students and families start off the year on a positive note as well. Any questions in terms of elementary and principal?
Could you tell me the name of the three series of the reading program?
Benchmark and Advance.
Thank you.
And then special education report for the year, I did hand out a copy to everybody, I know it was included in the packet on the website. But just a couple of things that I wanted to point out from twenty twenty three to now. So as you can see, twenty four, twenty five, we had two hundred and four meetings, and in twenty three, twenty four, there was a hundred and seventy one. So when I looked back to see what was the discrepancy and the increase of thirty three meetings, we had a lot of parent requested meetings, which are typically program reviews, so that is very encouraging that the families want to be involved in that process, along with the everyday annual reviews, transferring students, transfer out students. So as you can see, there's a lot, a lot of time and planning that goes into those formal meetings every year. And then just on the back, in terms of our classification rate, our classification rate is twenty seven and a half percent, and that is up from twenty five percent in twenty three, twenty four. But obviously, too, as our enrollment numbers are declining, one or two or five kids makes a big difference in this percentage.
How do we compare with other districts, state numbers, national numbers, do we know?
Yeah, I would say regionally, it's similar, for sure. I think our kids, and all kids now, have very different needs, even five years, ten years from now. Definitely, our student population and the makeup of an average student on a daily basis, needs are very, very different. Yeah, no problem. But then if you have any questions about that, after looking at that, please feel free to reach out to me. I just want to thank Jennifer Nims for putting all the numbers together and putting that easy to read document together. Thank you.
Any questions, Mr. Cook? All right, so we have our student representatives, Mr. Landen Cook with the C this evening. You have a report for us?
Before I read my report, I'd like to thank the members of the Board of Education for this opportunity. I'm excited to be the first student representative on the board of Hartford, and I look forward to providing student perspective. Moving on, sports has been the main headline for students this summer. A significant portion of the student body is a part in summer programs for baseball, softball, basketball, soccer, et cetera. Most notably, large groups of participants present regularly for both boys and girls' summer basketball, as well as soccer events during the month of July and early August. Athletics has continued to be a focus of many of the four men in the student body recently. As this morning, trials began for both soccer and volleyball at the varsity and GAV, respectively. The number of participants for the soccer program appears to be pleased. In regards to academics, students will return to classes on Thursday, September fourth, although some students have been continuing their studies during the summer through free courses that are offered through Hudson Valley Community College. This program has been a great way for students to earn college credits at no cost to them. Additionally, students this year will be the first group to experience school life with a complete cell phone in, and surprisingly, only a minor amount of discourse has been heard from the students during some months.
Did you take one of those classes?
Yeah.
What did you take?
Some sports nutrition and health sciences.
And did you, did you eat for breakfast, lunch, and dinner? Were they good? Did you enjoy it?
Yes.
That's great, thank you.
Yeah, we had maybe half a dozen students taking, we think it turned up to eighty college credits for free through Hudson Valley Community College, that is a free program.
Your father likes free.
If it's free, it's for me. Delanda was enthusiastic, was an enthusiastic student. Have you learned of that?
Thank you, Mr. Cook.
Thank you.
I'll move then to our action items, first one is eight point one, the personnel consent agenda. Now, I would have had in your board packet eight point one point one to eight point one point eight, but we do have two additional items that involve appointment and resignation. So perhaps we'll just take a minute to review those documents so we have a clear understanding of what we're going on. All set?
Yes.
All set, thank you.
So, eight, one point one through eight point four eight are pretty clear cut. Last two, eight point four nine, attend the new additions. Appointment of Morgan Press as a long-term seven to twelve ELA substitute effective September one, twenty twenty five through December nineteenth, twenty twenty five, and accepting the letter of resignation from Edward Stewart from the position of bus driver, again, effective September one, twenty twenty five. So I have a motion to accept those recommendations. Mr. Smith? And second, Mrs. Thomas, any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? All right.
And just like, we have, one of our new appointments is our new high school special education teacher who's joined us today, Steve Sasse. So just like to welcome Steve to the district. Congratulations. He and I had very different vacations. We were on vacation at the same time. I was on a beach in North Carolina, he was biking from Buffalo to Hudson Falls. Biking, the Hurricanet Trail from Buffalo. Very different vacations.
That's quite a journey.
How long did it take you?
Seven days.
When he was in group?
No, it's somebody in one.
Good for you. Athletic slalom.
Move then to eight point two, BOC's lease agreement. We've reviewed that, and the recommended action is that the Board of Education approved the proposed agreement resolution with the board of Saratoga, Washington, Hamilton, Essex County BOCs. We have a motion to that effect. Mrs. Thomas, and second, Mrs. Happy, any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Carry? And we have our superintendent's goals. If you had a chance to review those, and Mr. Cook was kind enough to provide me with a look at that earlier, they all looked very solid. So the recommendation is that the Board of Education approve the superintendent's proposed goals for the twenty twenty five, twenty twenty six school year. We have a motion?
Subterms.
Mrs. Thomas, and second, Mr. Smith, all in favor? Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? That I was approved in. Then eight point four, air rifle club. Recommended action is that the Board of Education approve the creation of the Hartford Air Rifle Club as a probationary club during its first year for the twenty twenty five, twenty twenty six school year, and appoint Mr. Caleb Sutcliffe as voluntary advisor. We have a motion to that effect.
I have a question. I'm not quite sure what an air rifle is. What is an air?
Is that a question for Mr. Cook?
I'm afraid anybody can answer it.
I would say probably Mr. Smith might be better.
Instead of using like a powder or charge from a bullet, it's actually air pressure.
But it does have a bullet?
Yeah.
Pellets, like, almost like a BB type thing?
Well, it's usually larger than a BB. It's like.
Well, it looks like a pellet gun?
What's that?
It's like a pellet gun?
It's still like a pellet, it's, I mean, there's different types of air rifles you can get, too, for doing different things. I mean, a lot of people will use air rifles for hunting or target practice is one of the main things, because it's a lot less costly than shooting a twenty-two shell or whatever. But I mean, it's still, it's still like, yeah.
So it's a little more sophisticated than BB gun, it's not a BB gun.
No, it's, you can use CO2 or you can use pump action, it's just a, it's, it would be like when you first take an air compressor or.
Oh, yeah, yeah.
That charge is what charges, propels the ammo up.
I should look it up, I didn't know.
Any other questions? May I motion for approval of that amendment? Mr. Smith, and second, Mrs. Thomas, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? That's carried. Eight point five, non-district resident students. Recommended actions that Board of Education approve the requests of Mrs. Tricia Shaw to enroll her son Colin Shaw and Mr. Kendrick Whitney to enroll his sons Kyle and Brayden as non-district resident students for the twenty twenty five, twenty twenty six school year. I guess when they moved into their new home, they changed.
Outside of the.
So we have a motion to approve those requests. Mrs. Happy, second, Mrs. Thomas, any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Oppose? That's carried. Eight point six, two service contracts. Recommended actions that Board of Education approve the agreements with eight point six point one Auctions International and eight point six point two Albany Medical College, and authorize our superintendent to sign on the district. Motion? Mrs. Thomas, and second? This is happy, we'll give you that one.
I have a couple of questions on that contract. Looking through that from the public health lens, it did not see mention of where the COVID and flu testing, who was reporting the testing?
If they test, like, if they.
Positive and negative.
I'll have to double check with them. I would imagine that we would probably report.
I don't want to increase the workload of your staff of having to report that.
Yeah, I would imagine if we tested it, that we would, but I'll double check.
Yes, okay. The other thing on page thirteen of that document, so it's page twenty one of the packet, it mentions for the antihistamine medication, it mentions Claritin in one section and then Zirtec in the other section, and those are two different medications.
What page are you on?
Page twenty one of the packet.
Yeah, I see. That they, that they, those are the medications that they can help dispense.
Right, but they're they're different medications, so will they be dispensing both of them or one of them?
Probably both of them, based on whatever the parent, I would imagine that it's based on whatever the parent wants for that prescription, if they sign a prescription.
Okay. Thank you.
Hey, any other questions regarding that? We have a motion then, Mrs. Thomas, and second? Mrs. Happy, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? That's carried then. Eight point seven, safety plans. Recommended action is that the Board of Education adopt the proposed district level safety plan, the proposed building level safety plan, and the proposed automated external defibrillation program. We have a motion to that effect.
Do you have also a question? I'll make the motion, but I have a question.
Okay.
Somewhere it says.
Mrs. Thomas, and then a second by Mrs. Happy, and then discussion, yes.
You said here defibrillator four or six with a question mark? Do we have four, do we have?
We have six. They might, they might not have, Nita might not have updated that. Yep, six.
Thank you.
Welcome.
Okay, any other questions? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? That's carried. Eight point eight is the tax levy resolution. Recommended action is that the Board of Education adopt the proposed tax levy resolution and move to a voice vote, so entertain a motion for the resolution. Mrs. Happy, and second, Mr. Smith, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye, opposed? And then we'll have a voice vote on that.
Mr. Justin?
Yes.
Mrs. Thomas? Mr. Smith?
Yes.
Mrs. Happy?
Yes.
Mrs. Arlen?
Yes.
All right, similar scenario with eight point nine. This is the tax warrant resolution. Recommended actions that the Board of Education adopt the proposed tax warrant resolution and move to a voice vote, so may have a motion to move to that resolution.
Subterms.
Mrs. Thomas, and second? Mrs. Arlen? Elisa Arlen? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Oppose? Okay, that's carried.
Mr. Justin?
Yes.
Mrs. Thomas?
Yes.
Mr. Smith?
Yes.
Mrs. Happy?
Yes.
Mrs. Arlen?
Yes.
All righty. Eight point ten, surplus inventory. Recommended actions that the Board of Education approve the following items as surplus property and authorize the recommended method of disposal. First, the listed ELA curriculum materials. Disposal method would be donation to the only elementary school and recycling. Next, two portable salad bars. Disposal would be placing them on Auctions International and sold to the highest bidder. And then finally, the identified technology items, which are listed in the board packet. So may I have a motion?
Subterms.
Mrs. Thomas, and second? Mrs. Happy, any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Carries? We have a recommendation to adjourn the executive session, but before that, are there any items from the board for the grid of the order in terms of public presentation?
I just wondered if you had any idea, although it's hard to keep track, are the UBS reports and the PIB reports being used?
Yeah.
All good?
Yeah. Very much so. Is there any?
May I just speak for just a moment?
Go ahead, that's good. Sure.
Ella, I just wanted to comment, just to let the board know that I've unpacked the new reading materials that Mrs. Depuis spoke about, and I am so excited to be using those. And I know that they were quite an investment for the district, and they just look absolutely fantastic and so appropriate for our students.
Thank you very much.
That's good to hear, thank you. Is there any, is there any yearly maintenance or anything that needs to be done as far as the surface or?
Not that they, not that they told us, but I can reach out to the architect just, just to double check to see if there is recommended treatment that we would do that.
My thinking is that if there's some type of warranty or something on the surface, if there's, they require a maintenance program for one or two years, we don't want to miss out on the warranty part for.
Yep, no, I can reach out to them.
All right, anything else? Otherwise, I'll, they're paying a motion to adjourn to executive session for an expressive purpose as provided for us by New York City education law and referred to as items of personnel, but to be a little more specific, it's items referring to the financial credit or employment history of a particular person or corporation or matters leading to employment, employment, promotion, demotion, discipline, suspension, dismissal, or removal of a particular person or corporation. So that protects us as. So that protects us as board members and administrators for discussions that we have during executive session. So I think I, for Mrs. Thomas, may propose that effect.
I'm sure.
All we need is a second. Mrs. Happy, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? All right, then we will move to executive session, and Mr. Cook will be taking any public action?
No, no action.
Public action will return to public session.